My name is Kathy Judd Stein. I'm Chair of the Massachusetts Gaming Commission. I wish to thank you all for the hospitality today. We appreciate very much all of the town of Hardwick's generous accommodations here at this beautiful setting on this lovely day, Tuesday, October 18th. I'd like to introduce my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Eileen O'Brien to my left, Commissioner Brad Hill, Commissioner Nikisha Skinner, and Commissioner Jordan Maynard. We are convening today in conjunction with an application that came before us for horse racing. It is on quite a long that we are mandated to hold a public hearing, so again, we thank you for accommodating us. I wish to first attend to one important piece of housekeeping. The local select board has convened a contemporaneous public meeting that will today along with our public hearing as a matter of transparency and for its full compliance with the open meeting law. Throughout the course of today's meeting, any public comments will be directed to the Massachusetts Gaming Commission as, as I mentioned, the purpose of our mandated public hearing. So at this point, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Chair Julie Frank, and thank you again, Chairwoman, for accommodating us today. We appreciate it and will allow you to open your meeting.
Thank you. I'm going to speak loudly without a microphone as I fall. Speak loudly without a microphone. I have a loud enough voice, so hopefully it carries. So, can you hear me? So I'm opening the Tuesday, October 18th Board of Selectmen meeting. As you heard from Chair of the Gaming Commission, we opened or we scheduled this meeting jointly. It's their meeting, but we scheduled the Selectmen's meeting for the purpose of transparency to make sure that if any questions came to the Board that we are in compliance with open meeting law. This is not our meeting. She mentioned any questions are for the Gaming Commission and not for the Board. Is it the Board's pleasure to adjourn the meeting immediately following the Gaming Commission's hearing?
I would make a motion to adjourn immediately following.
Second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. What that means is we will not be in open session after the Commission finishes. After they finish, our meeting will automatically adjourn. All in favor? Aye. Welcome to Hardwick. Thank you for coming to our community. We're excited to sort of see how this goes. I know our townspeople probably have many, many questions for you, so without further ado, I'll turn it back to the Chair. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Frank. Before I get started and officially call to order our meeting, I wish to acknowledge the caterer of our cookies and coffee today, your local Meany's Coffee, Council Hardwick, Megan Jola, and we are delighted that she was able to accommodate us. Thank you. So I do call to order our public hearing and public meeting. Today is Tuesday, October 18th, 2022, and I do have some formal remarks to make first before we invite your public comments. This is a public hearing before the Massachusetts Gaming Commission relative to the application for a license to hold or conduct a new racing meeting submitted by Commonwealth Equine and Agricultural Center LLC. We also will call it CEAC. As I indicated, my name is Kathy Judd Stein, and I am Chair of the Massachusetts Gaming Commission, and I am delighted to be joined today by my fellow commissioners, Commissioner Hill, Maynard, O'Brien, and Skinner. As you may know, the Commission has the authority to issue a license to hold or conduct a racing meeting to CEAC. The public support for this proposal, or lack thereof, is a factor that the Commission will evaluate in making the final award of the license. Accordingly, your presence here today and the written comments you have submitted will play an important role in the decision. Thank you for being a part of this process. Before we begin the public hearing, I would like to lay out the process and establish the ground rules that will follow. The hearing, which is provided for by Section 3 of Chapter 128A of the Massachusetts General Laws, is intended to afford an opportunity to offer input and comment on the application to any entity or member of the public who is interested. The hearing will begin with a presentation by the applicant, many of whom are sitting, representatives are sitting in the front. After the presentation, we will open the floor to public comments. At the conclusion of the comments from members of the public, we will afford the applicant an opportunity to make any closing comments he would like to make. Any commissioner may at any time ask a question of the applicant or anyone else. This is marked up as a public meeting in addition to a public hearing. They also may wish to simply comment. The one thing I do know is that we are all very appreciative of your attendance today. In an effort to make best use of all of our time, we ask that any member of the public proceed as follows in addressing the commission. First, there will be an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission. If you register to speak on the commission's website by 4:00 p.m. today, your name has already been added into the list. We will begin with the names from that list, and if there is time remaining, we will open it to comments from other community members who are present who sign up in person today when they arrive, or if they provide the name during the proceedings to Crystal Boishman are on the list, Crystal is seated at the left. Second, when I call your name, please approach the microphone, state your name, and tell us where you're from and who you represent as a plaintiff. Third, in order to ensure that everyone who wants to speak gets an opportunity to do so, we are going to limit time sadly. We'll limit it to two minutes at length, and if it turns out that we need more time, I do reserve the right to reduce it to one minute. I guess a time limit that you're familiar with here when you speak in front of the local select board. Fourth, if you have a question that you would like the applicant to address, please address the question to me directly, and then I will speak to the applicant. Finally, we recognize the great passion that many of you have with regard to this subject. We welcome your comments to reflect that passion. However, in order for this part of the process to achieve its greatest value, it's tremendously important that the discourse here today be respectful. I can hardly tell from being here for such a short time that that is a core value of this community. For those who have submitted written comments about this application, please know that the Commission will review and consider each and every one of them. And we thank you for taking the time to memorialize your comments in writing. And we also thank you for your interest again today. The other, my fellow commissioners, do you have anything to add? Okay. So with that, I'm going to ask that the applicant come forward, please identify its representative's attendance today and begin its presentation, and then we'll turn to the rest of you who look forward to hearing them.
Good afternoon. My name is Patrick Hanley. I represent Commonwealth Equine and Agricultural Center. I'd like to thank the Commission, Board of Selectmen, and the community for having us here today. Just a brief introduction of myself. I was a prosecutor for 14 years, worked at the Attorney General's Office, first teaching enforcement under both Attorney General Cogly, I was reappointed under Attorney General Keely, and I've been in private practice and working with this team for most of that time, for about the last three years. I represent the team before the Gaming Commission, but this is my first opportunity to meet the community. Thank you for having us. The team that I have with me today is Richard Fields, Robin Kligian, Eric Cade Feeny, John Stephanie. We filed, as you know, an application on September 30th, and this hearing is required by statute as a mandated chair. And if you give us this license and we reapply next year, there will be a hearing like this every year in this community because we recognize that community buy-in and input is a critical part of the application process. Right now, to give you an overview of the project, I'm going to introduce my colleague, John Stephanie. We'll tell you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Patrick. Madam Chairs, thank you for giving us this opportunity and members of the Commission and members of the Board of Selectmen and residents for joining us today. This is our fourth public meeting. We've come to know this date well. We spent a couple hours on two consecutive evenings with the Board of Selectmen here, and we had a meeting in Town Hall with folks to discuss this. We've handed out to you and to others a Q and A of some of the questions we've been asked prior to this meeting so that you can see our written responses to those questions. In addition to that, we have supplied some backup information to the Board of Selectmen and have answered or tried to answer every single question that we have been asked in the community in writing, and we have posted those on our website as well. This is a very unique project, and it's different than any of the other applicants since 1935 that this Commission and its predecessors have considered. It's different in the following way. This is a project conceived by horse enthusiasts, horse farmers, and horse breeders that focuses first and foremost on breeding, training, and racing. And racing is an important part of the economic engine of owning and caring for these equestrian athletes, but it is a very small component of what will occur on this 359 acres and adjacent parcels that we are in the process of have put under agreement to use as part of this. We see an active horse retirement program as part of the use of this. These owners have been very aggressive in the past on anti-doping, anti-slaughter policies, so much so they've led a nation in that, and they're committed to the Horse Integrity Security Authorities Guidelines and Policies, which are not yet a year old, but follow those and be part of the conversations to help lead those in terms of what they mean here. Questions that we've been asked about this project and this parcel. The project is largely agricultural. It is consistent with the zoning of Hardwick and the White Tafan community than it is in the agricultural preservation restrictions that are on the parcel itself. Horse breeding has been part of our agricultural tradition, history, laws, and budgets for centuries in Massachusetts. The agricultural statute, as you may know, is Chapter 128. The racing statute is Chapter 128A. The legislature has provided funds through the Racehorse Development Fund and et cetera for racing. And a question that is often asked is the connection between the funds that are collected and how they are dispersed in agriculture. And I, as we were preparing for this meeting, when we were talking with Richard Fields and I, and Robin, met with the Breeders and Horse Owners Association and their Board, a day ago, the Commonwealth averaged 35 foals a year, baby horses that were born and they're then trained and put into the equestrian athletes. Last year, that number was two. Now, why does that matter to us as a community and to us as a Commonwealth, and why has the legislature dedicated so many dollars to dealing with it? Because as Dr. Mullin from UMass wrote in a report from 2016, a breeding operation like this and racing is a way for horse farmers, through the collection of purses, through cleaning races and the sale of their horses, to generate revenue, to sustain their farms and their farriers and their veterinarians and to hay their fields, et cetera. We believe this facility here, and we have partnered with Dr. Mullin to bring him on as a consultant in this project, we believe not only does this project have the ability through the generation of those revenues to sustain and to be good stewards of this particular property, but to be able to do that in other properties in Hardwick and throughout the Commonwealth to sustain those horse farmers, to keep them from going under and failing. And so it's important to understand what we see as the relationship. This is not merely a track for the owners to make some money. Be clear, they will make some money out of this, not a lot, but they will make something. Some, it's a for-profit entity, but in addition to that, they will pump a piece of the returns into a retirement program. They will be supporting horse farms and agricultural interests around the state. We've applied to race next year for two days, September 9th and 10th. We've chosen those particular days because in consultation with the folks who are, that are haying these horses, they believe that in that time period, they will be done with the third cutting of the hay of the season, will be able to race, and then they'll be able to have a fourth cutting of hay later in the year. So we expect there to be minimal disruption to the haying operation that occurs on this site. That will happen because a day or two before the races occur, we will set up and they will put in fences and guidelines for the track. We will work with the community in terms of putting up tents and kiosks for wagering, for food, for other needs and desires of our customers, and they will be taken down shortly thereafter. We've committed to the community that any and all expenses associated with that, these details, fire details, public works, cleanup, et cetera, that we would bear those costs solely ourselves. We've, in addition to that, committed to them that in addition to the statutory revenue that would be given to them by the Commonwealth and any additional taxes and that other, that we would guarantee that at least a half million dollars a year of new revenue to the community. To put that in perspective for the Commission, the community's annual budget this last year was $6,065,000. So it's about an 8% increase in unrestricted revenue for the community. In addition to that, we're looking at 25 to 50 full-time employees. Most of those will be in the breeding operation and maintaining the property, and we expect 100 or more paid volunteers to be employed for festivals, for ushering, directing traffic, assisting in one way or another. Something that's worth noting is this piece of Worcester County and this community has almost double the rate of the folks living above the poverty line as the state area. It's about almost 500 people. And in our report on our economic analysis of the site, those 100 positions, which will provide good wages for a short period of time, will be very helpful in elevating many of those elderly or single parents or others above that poverty. So we see the 100 jobs in many ways as more significant to dealing with issues of poverty in the community than maybe the 25 or 50 jobs where people choose one position or another as they relate to that. A couple of other pieces we have drafted and submitted to the Board of Selectmen, a draft post-community agreement. We are fully committed to making all of our commitments enforceable in writing in a contract with the Board of Selectmen. And included in that was a local advisory committee to work with us, committed to that is working and meeting with them to do an evaluation after our festivals and before it on an annual basis, and the review and/or peer review of parking and parking plan and traffic activity on an annual basis. And I guess I'll stop there, and we look forward to answering the public's questions and working with the Commission. Thank you.
Before we continue, I just want to point out that the Gaming Commission will not be making a decision today. In fact, we will be holding an adjudicatory hearing and deliberations later, the date in November, so it could actually be the end of this month, and we do have a deadline of November 15th to make our decision by statute or deadline. So I just want to point out that the Commission has a good deal of work ahead of it. And then I also wanted to point out that our Director of Racing called me right before I came into the building, and that's Dr. Alex Lightbaum. She's been in the racing community for a long time, Beth Marion as well. She's an important member of the team. She would have liked to have been here, but she really did not be allowed, so she decided to turn around. So we're just going to be thinking of Dr. Lightbaum as the meeting proceeds. So I'm going to call today first for our speaker, Senator Goby is here, and so we invite her to the microphone. Senator Goby, there you are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. For record, I am Ann Goby, I live in the town of Spencer, but I have the distinct honor of representing the town of Hardwick in the State Senate. I would first like to welcome all of you, including my former colleague and friend, Brad Hill, and I thank you for joining us in Hardwick. I know that you mentioned that there will be a two-minute limit, and I know that for many people, it does not seem like a very long time. However, Abraham Lincoln delivered a thing called the Gettysburg Address in two minutes and 272 words. And while you won't hear anyone give you the Gettysburg Address tonight, you will hear people speaking with as much passion, a lot of community that they love and care about. And I know that you will listen, that you will hear, and that you will take appropriate action after you hear all of the testimony that you will hear this evening. And so that is really my plea to you, to make sure that you listen to the good people of this community who care so much about it, love this community, and want to make sure that it stays as public as it can be. So thank you very much, and I appreciate the time.
Thank you so much. Okay, and then I believe the order of the speakers, so if you really reflect the order of registration, we have next Barbara Kellogg.
Thank you. I didn't realize I was first. My name is Barbara Kellogg. Can everybody hear okay? Yeah. Barbara Kellogg, I'm a Massachusetts horse owner and landowner. I'm also an attorney. I don't represent anyone in this process. My only interest is transparency and open government. And I'm here to talk to you about the huge disparity of power between these developers and the town residents. The citizens in Hardwick have had five weeks to try to absorb and process different information about this application, which is a project that is going to transform their town forever. In the meantime, these developers have been searching for a site for years for any place where they could enable a racing license so that they can start their life. They've employed teams of lawyers and lobbyists for decades to shape and control horse racing in Massachusetts. They spend hundreds of thousands of dollars a year on Beacon Hill and keeping contact with your team. They have had so much communication with your office that when I put in a records request in August for communications between their corporations and your office, I was told that that request was such that it would take at least six weeks before I would get anything, and then I would get documents every six weeks for I don't know how long they're after. The story should have been that your legal team came to this hometown and met with the officials and town votes to educate them and answer their questions. Instead, after minutes here in Hardwick, the developers realized how much folks love this protected piece of land where they want to build a commercial race track. So they came up with this absurd explanation pretending they're going to construct an imaginary movie set that's going to move in and move out, and then everything will be the same and serene as before. They've had a lot of questions. They certainly never knew, and the Board of Selectmen never knew that they could just contact me directly and be in the same sort of contact that the developers have been for years. And I, I just don't think that it's, we have two minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Kellogg. Thank you. Ms. Kellogg, I think I would like to assure the public that it is important to the commissioners that our public records request are processed in timely fashion. I'm hearing you saying that you did not get that. I ask my fellow commissioners here, they, of course, please, there is a possibility that we received something by email from an applicant and we don't remember or have not opened it, but each of us are saying that we have no memory right now of receiving any direct email from the applicant, but we will make sure that that public records request is properly processed. So your note today is duly noted. Of course, that came through a member, through our team, and I don't believe we have, I'm not sure if we had knowledge of that request or how it had been processed, but at this point, none of us can say that we have received an email from this applicant today. So just, yeah, that's as transparent as we can be right here, but you deserve to have that request fully processed. Thank you. Next, please, Brian Kelly. Mr. Kelly? Okay, maybe he'll arrive later. Crystal, if you could keep note of that, please. Mr. William Van Arstel?
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Thank you for hearing our comments and questions. Thank you to the Board for considering those comments and questions. All right, how's this? Any better? All right.
He made nice thank yous. So thank you.
So I've lived here 13 years. I've lived adjacent to this property. I'm a butter, and I am in favor of development. I'm in favor of growth. I'm in favor of this town moving forward, but only if you do it carefully and thoughtfully. And we just haven't had the time to do that. As we just mentioned, we've only been talking about this for a few months. We've not had the time to study and understand the issues that we're dealing with. One of those issues is an APR that is on that land, and I don't understand how a racetrack is agricultural. It seems to me that's a dramatic change of use, which has legal connotations with an APR that I don't understand, but people do. So we should look into that. We need more time. This is forever, because I understand that once the town grants permission to sign a racetrack in this location, it's forever. And the commitment to you, the Commission, appears pretty clear that they, and anybody who operates, that has to try to run 60 race days a year, not two, or three, or four. 60. Traffic is going to be huge. 1,000 cars will stretch 3.6 miles from the race site all the way down through the building. 5,000 people is enormous. That's a large cruise ship pulling right up to Great Meadow Road and unloading every passenger into Great Meadow. That's 100 Peter Pan school. That's 100 Peter Pan school buses. At 50 people per porta body, that requires 100 porta bodies of a church. Thank you very much for your time.
Yes. If one group in this hall is going to fly, can another group too? Or is this not one of the other questions? Did you ask a question or did you just?
You know, you've raised a fair point. Let's withhold applause. Does that make sense? And I would love to withhold applause. And perhaps, I think I stated at the beginning, some housekeeping rules that, you know, should somebody speak and we are passionate if we could withhold comments from our seats during anybody's comments. But you've raised a very fair point. Thank you. Next, Mr. Neil Dawson.
Hi, Neil Dawson, 110 Berry Road in Hardwick. Lived here 40 years, raised my kids here. For 250 years, Hardwick and small towns all around New England have made their way with a uniquely democratic and inclusive and messy and careful and slow form of government. It takes a long time for things to happen here and that serves us well. It protects us from making big mistakes. I personally believe it's the way our forefathers pretended it to be, a government of common people using common sense. Now along comes the Commonwealth group as it dropped from the sky with their fully formed proposal backed up by a cadre of warriors, younger people, lobbyists, misleading renderings of festivals and money, 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 money. It's been shocking and most people in town have never even heard of this until six or eight weeks ago. We had barely broke asleep from our eyes before these guys were being swired around town. I'll buy this, maybe we'll buy that, we'll need to close this street, money, money, money. They were at the 50 yard line before anyone even knew they were here. They're asking us to make a terribly hurried decision, designating this parcel in Hardwick as a horse racing site right now because that fits their timeline. But their timeline doesn't have to be our timeline. This is the biggest decision in Hardwick in 100 years. It just doesn't make any sense if they didn't show them the stop sign and it's 15 seconds, I'll go fast. I've been the CFO and a managing partner of a large manufacturing company in New England for 20 years. No businessman in his right mind would ever enter into an agreement with this back into me with no control, no apparent exit strategy, so many unanswered questions. I ask not issue their racing license at this time. Give us a chance to breathe, just to absorb this and be what we are as this small town. If I could just, thank you to the selectmen for doing this job. I was a CBA member during the great thing of horse and it was horrible. So I feel your pain. Thank you.
Thank you everyone for holding applause. I appreciate everyone wanting to acknowledge their community members, but we'll keep it there. Thank you. But Kara, excuse me for, if I mispronounced your name, Wisniski? Wisniski? You'll help me out. Thank you.
Oh, the town, I didn't have my class assigned. I apologize. No, I'm sorry. It's on, I'm polished, there's a lot of the comments. So. Wisniski, yes, thank you.
I think the only point that I want to make here, my name is Carol Zinsky. I am actually a butter to the property and so this is really going to impact my life greatly. Not only will their barns be behind my house, but the brace will be right in front of it for the most part. You know, I could stand up here and talk about the bribery that they are giving us $500,000 and laughing about $500 million in the first meeting. I could talk about what I feel has not been great transparency during this entire process. You know, I think a lot of that has already been covered, but I think really what it comes down to is what does Hardwick want to be remembered for? What do you know Hardwick? What do you know about Hardwick today? And I wish I could ask about you and get an answer because I'm sure you probably didn't even realize what was on the map in terms of what Hardwick is, how we are defined, where we come from, the kinds of people that we have here. And I think I'd like to just ask the townspeople, I'd like to ask the select people, how do we want to be remembered? Do we want to be remembered for this archaic sport that we're bringing back? You know, what was last, how many racetracks are being proposed in Massachusetts today? We are a really small town. 5,000 people is a lot. That's 3,000 people in town, I think. When I was a kid, I grew up here, when I was a kid, it was far, far less. But what it comes down to is, do we want to bring this archaic sport back? Do we want to bring people back to this place and convey this message to them? Do we want to be the town that unearths this very archaic process back into society? And personally, I don't think that that's the way that Hardwick wants to be defined. Thank you.
Mr. Roger Raymond?
Good evening. Welcome to our little town. I'm just going to ramble this all night. This is the most heavily regulated activity you will see. If there is either a whiff of corruption or scandal or something else, state police has a unit assigned to investigate this. All of this folklore of problem and whatever else might make a nice 1950s movie is not the world we live in today. That's very similar to the Ron Stefan movie a couple of years ago. Eric Feeney falsely used the Hardwick address to gain access to a private Hardwick virtual meeting place, a place where it is required to be a Hardwick resident and to supply a Hardwick address. An address she does not own or represent, neither do the people she works with or for, or rather a place her colleagues want. Eric Dixon stood as a Hardwick resident at a Hardwick town meeting, posing as a Hardwick resident. Eric, who's just over here, is also a colleague of Robin and John and other members of the proposed horse track. Yet no one that night acknowledged that they knew him or had worked with him prior because he sat on the board with them at the proposed track in Sturgis. My friend John, also with a smirk and once again is kind of sending an argument to tone as if four weeks takes to question him, told a member of the community that his research of numbers in regards to the amount of people that would come to these festivals and race days was wrong. Also, while continuing to laugh about the 500,000 or 500 billion that was being tossed around. However, your guys' rules that we've all looked up align with the wrong numbers. John wants to tell us only a few days, just a few festival years, so on, so on. However, your rules and regulations, minimum requirements, your rules, your regulations, state minimum requirements, far exceed what we're being told. That leads me to believe that John even doesn't know what he's talking about, which I highly doubt in this case, although I dislike John and his colleagues and their deceitful manner of plans. I don't find them stupid, just rude and greedy. So once again, it leads me to believe that we've fed another eye. My name is Roger Raymond. I live on Upwood Church Street with my wife, my two boys, and my daughter. I won't ever have the money that, or the resources, I'm sorry, I get all that listed, that John and Rich have. What I do have is three and a half acres of briars and stones, just a short couple hundred yards into these woods. Rich came here telling of us his dreams, his love of the country, farms and lands he bought to pursue those dreams. I asked this the other night, I'll ask you people now, what about my family's dreams? What about the other residents' dreams of the church, of the village, of the town? Now my question is, would you guys lie to us as they lied to us? Are these the people you want to represent the gaming commission, the state? Like I said before, our town is small, but our minds are not. So we don't appreciate you coming here, being rude to us. Those are my questions. Would you falsely represent information, how you present it, and so forth? And is this who you want to be affiliated with, the gaming commission, the state representative? Is that who you want to represent?
This is our public hearing, and today we are hearing comments from you. I've noted your question, questions? Your question is noted?
We do have.
Well, we will be having public, there is another setting where we will be engaged, but today we're doing the real listening. Thank you for your comments. Mr. Raymond, I just want to get the dates so that you can monitor all of our meetings, our, should be, will be streamed. The adjudicatory process will be, you'll be hearing, then you'll be hearing us and Get your boys ready. Our public hearing, the adjudicatory hearing will be on holiday at 1:30. So hopefully it will finish in advance of trick or treating. Thank you. That's when we'll be speaking and we'll have, we'll be prepared to be able to process. Today's listening. Thank you. Mr. Marcus Hayden? Not here today. Okay, thank you very much. Mr.
Good afternoon, everybody. I just want to start off by saying I'm a resident of Hardwick. I have been here a whopping 11 months, which I come up with every minute. However, I stand before you and I do also want to acknowledge that nothing takes, cut out your step like this week in your shoe, like I had walking up this podium. I have a couple of questions for the commission. First off, I know you're not able to answer these today, but I'd love to answer these in the future, if you're able to provide. The first of which is the applicant has indicated that they tend to have a HCA with teeth. That's enforceable. What, what is that teeth? That was necessarily the right way to phrase that, but to me, I don't see the teeth in the legislation that exists today. I don't see any municipal mechanisms to throttle the number of race days, which are clearly important to all of us. I personally see that as something that is a little bit of a gray area. We haven't had effective understanding of what that is even. What happens if we fail to meet an agreement on a host community agreement, either before or after a sign? Is that something that goes to arbitration? I'm not sure. These are the kinds of things that we really need to know in order to make an educated decision. Any decision without information like this would be uneducated and therefore the only bad decision that we can make. Not saying yes or no, but we do need information before we can proceed. And lastly, I'm sure all of you have enjoyed the drive out toward Hardwick and our good town, but I'm sure you all know this too, the limited road infrastructure we have. We are extremely concerned with the high volume of individuals coming into the town if we allow the applicant to move forward. And that's not something the commission can fix. That's not something the applicant can fix. That's a function of the state. And I'm sure as each of you know, who are Massachusetts subscribers, the state's not exactly effective when it comes to increasing road infrastructure.
Mr. Ernie Corrigan?
Good afternoon, Chair, Tricia, and the selectmen. My name is Eric Corrigan. I'm here to represent the New England Horsemen's Management and Detective Association. Paul Umbrella, who you're familiar with, is very sick. It's impossible to get out and talk to the same party, but he was not able to make it today. So I'm going to keep my remarks brief. The HPPA will submit a formal letter to secure their process by the 24th of November. First, as you know, the thoroughbred racing industry is strictly regulated by state federal law with regard to the health and safety of race horses. We have committed to the community that people exceed those standards, including our association's anti-slarthing home that promotes the safety of retirement of horses after their racing careers. We are pledged to contribute directly to a retirement program that would ban any owner for racing if they sold a horse that is then disqualified. I'd also like to go on record to comment on statements that have been made in the community and outside the community by an opposition group that is circulating a petition to stop what it calls, quote, "is cruel and deadly and harmful." That characterization is affrontal, not only to our sport, but to this condition as well. Our horsemen and women have gone on raising and racing horses as though they were their own children. Thoroughbred racing and racing horses, whether they ever race or not, are the most beloved animals on our farms. While we are supporting Hardwick's racing program, it's no different from the street chase activities that occurred in this very state forum. It was widely successful and supported by the community. Every horse or races is examined by the state prior to a race to determine if it can safely compete and is examined afterward to determine if it incurred any physical injury as a result of racing.
Mr.
Thanks. I'm Bill Cole. Welcome. A quick thing to you, it's good that you did it this way, I think, and I guess it's on Zoom. A lot of people don't know that. That makes it a bit odd today, but any of us here who want to help people, it's on Zoom. They can find the instructions, I guess, on the website. Is that right? Join this right now for all of us. Just couldn't come here.
Yes, it's also being live streamed on our YouTube video, on our YouTube channel.
Good, thank you. Okay, so my comments will lead to maybe a couple of questions. First, about the timeline, which so many people are concerned about, what seems to be the rush to approve this and apparently start betting even before, before racing begins. And then specifically about the application before you, that was submitted, as you mentioned, on September 30th, 18 days ago. So is it rushed? I think so. Huge impacts to the town, very complicated matter. We need a lot of information from outside experts and simply have not got the time or had the time today to do it. So whose timeline are we on? You mentioned earlier, 11:15 is a deadline by statute, so I guess it's not going to be, we'll give you a little longer if you need it or something. One question about that would be, if it is not allowed, which I guess it could not be if the selectmen will go and give the 13A approval, it's not allowed, will, will it be back? Will they be able to apply for the same thing next year? We would have had time to look it all over and develop an HCA. We would have had time to look it all over and develop an HCA perhaps and everything else. Whose timeline are we really on? I'd also like to know if the board of selectmen should decide to grant the thirteen A approval? And then concern citizens, do we need more time with the petition out there that, which you know about? Um, and require them to reconsider their vote? And should they then decide, vote the same way again? Does that not put over the whole map? Is it not make the approval, the license application not possible at that point? And then it would, with that cloud over the thirteen A approval, not allowing it? That's one of my main questions, a bunch of other things that seem to be missing in the act, in the actual application. I didn't like the, the fact that it got rushed in and ended up with, uh, something called supposed to pull a thoroughbred track? Not Hardwick figures, different plan, didn't even know about that one. Clearly they too have been rushed by the deadline in their records, as being about the fifth effort to get this done in time. Thank you.
Right, position? Just as long as you speak right. Yeah, perfect, thank you. Um, I'm sure you can all appreciate that knowing the timeline, it was extremely difficult for any one of us to identify one or two issues that, among the many, that are a great concern to us. So I selected one issue, but I'd like to assure you that the reason we're all wanting to applaud is because we all share a lot of the concerns that are being raised in front of you. Um, my name's Margaret Heit, and I live at one ninety-eight Charity Hill Road in Hardwick. The, um, Great Meadow Brook Farm is regulated under the Mass Wildlife's Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program. With both priority habitat of rare species and estimated habitat for rare wildlife. Excuse me, legal state kind of language on the names. So the, uh, uh, National Heritage Program is an advisory committee to the Massachusetts Division of Fisheries and Wildlife and their board. And they're responsible for conservation and protection of hundreds of species, as well as the natural communities that make up their habitats. On this property, there is concern regarding the wetlands that have been nabbed by these organizations. And so if there's work such as construction, staging, access storing, stockpiling, planting, soil disturbance, placement of fill that were to occur, then a Massachusetts Endangered Species Act filing will be required from the property. The, um, rendering we've gotten from the developer seems to indicate that there would be potential new development within this wetlands area. And it might be worker housing that would be accepted or something. The national, um, the status of this program, um, the status of this property being in this program wasn't listed in the application that you received on September thirtieth. Um, in your application, you asked for any listing of any requirements of federal, state licensing permits and so on. And so I would ask that you ensure that this federal complex issue, which needs to be developed and any related issues environmentally and so on, would really be fully addressed before granting the license at this time. Thanks.
So I think we both are going to ask the same question as Heit. Could you just, um, repeat the, uh, the program, the Endangered Species Program as it sounds, as though it's a federal program? You could say it fully for us, please?
Yes, I, and I, I'm not an expert in all of this, but my understanding is it's the Mass Wildlife's National, excuse me, Natural, I minus the National.
Okay, thank you.
Natural Heritage and Endangered Species Program.
So it sounds as though it's a state.
It's a state is, is my understanding, yes.
You don't happen to have all the preferences? You don't happen to have, let me put that right.
Uh, I do not.
That's okay, thank you, you so much. I just checked in with my fellow commissioners to see if they had any follow-up questions or comments. And I believe, um, Commissioner O'Brien has a question for Mr. Cole. Um, am I correct, Mr. Cole? Um, Commissioner, do you, uh, Mr. Cole, you just made, you made reference to a petition and you guessed or like a well-known process or document that's out there? If you could just expand and then what would you say then? And if you wouldn't mind coming back to the microphone, thank you so much. We don't want to stop with every comment, but I will intermit and check in with my fellow commissioners.
Right, thank you. Uh, what I was referring to is what is, you know, six statutes, right? So, uh, one twenty-eight A, chapter one twenty-eight A, section thirteen A, on the subject of horses, dog racing meetings. Beats, pretty long, you know, we don't, it's all, gets down to the point where it describes, uh, after the approval of a location by the town council or the town, not the town council, the selectmen, any other town. The petition is twelve percent of the voters of the town. If I move town for protesting against such approval to be in effect, shall be suspended from taking effect at the town council or the selectman. As the case may be, shall immediately reconsider such approval. And if such approval is not received, the question of such approval should be submitted to the voters of the town. And a special election, which shall be called by the selectman or the council, as the case may be, and which shall be held within forty-five days of submission of said petition. So the approval shall become an all-avoidant, less than a majority of voters voting on the same, except electricity or any affirmative. So as I read it, suspended from taking effect while that plot was over this, which is likewise, what, what adds that plot to it legally? Is it, is it simply that the petition is beginning to be certain, like the goal of which happened well before, September fifteenth? Meeting could happen a while after? That was my question, if it was intended to get an application to amend the following.
Thank you, very helpful. Mr. James Logmarcino, please.
Good afternoon, James Logmarcino from Charity Hill Road, Hardwick. Traffic is one of the bigger elephants in the room with this proposal. Two minutes barely scratches the surface. Commonwealth Racing estimates three to five thousand attendees on race days during the first three years. This alone would have a significant impact on our town. I believe there are compelling reasons that that number could be much higher. Saratoga Racing has a total of over one hundred thousand fans during the first four days. Hardwick won't draw that number, but consider that Saratoga and Hardwick might be the only two thoroughbred racing options in most of New York and all of New England. Thoroughbred racing fans will come to wherever it is offered. Saratoga's only close metropolitan area is in Albany. Boston's metropolitan population is over four times greater. Hardwick would also draw from Worcester, Springfield, Holyoke, Hartford, Manchester, Concord, Providence, Rattleboro, and towns in between. I believe this presents real potential for growth to well exceed five thousand attendees. Hardwick remains a quiet little town for no small degree because it's hard to get to. Once you get off Route Two or the Mass Pike, you're on almost twenty miles of winding and hilly two-lane roads that go through small towns. Traffic from Worcester similarly travels through many small towns, and Petersham, Ware, and New Braintree, and many more need time to weigh in on this proposal. Saratoga is three-quarters of a mile off the New York State thruway to the main road that doesn't go through the town. The traffic traveling to these two thoroughbred racetracks could not be more different. Any, and the public safety would be much greater than risk in this town. It is unimaginable that this location could be permanently approved for horse racing without a prior traffic study by an independent entity. With the traffic issues alone and the potential for growth of this event, I believe Commonwealth Horse Racing has completely chosen the wrong property in the wrong town. Thank you.
Mr. Robert Page?
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, I'm Robert Page, I live on Ridge Road in Hardwick. I'm confused. I've read about other tracks spending many millions of dollars for their turf tracks. Two examples, ten million at the famous Churchill Downs to renovate their existing turf, turf track, and four years ago, four point five million dollars. I fingered a race track in Rochester to add a new turf track. And the designers of those tracks talk about a foot or more of substrate and new soil being placed before special grass is planted. Commonwealth Racing, the developer, the developers here in Hardwick have budgeted in their application to you two point two four four million dollars for constructing the track. And it asks you for time to develop the turnback before being required to race twenty days. But John Stephanini, their attorney and public spokesperson, told us here on October fourth, that they will merely oversee and, uh, run their race days after the second cutting of hay in existing fields, in, in these existing fields. No excavation. These seem totally inconsistent. I don't know what's true or whether it's dangerous for the horses to race without a substrate. It's just one more example of why, why you need to know on this license, because this process is flawed and rushed and due diligence has not been done. I also heard my bicycle up a beautiful upper, upper turnstreet where the developers plan to build their one-mile oval eight wide track. Let me tell you, it's not flat. My understanding is that thoroughbreds need a flat and well-built surface, not fields like hunters and jumpers used for the over-the-walls events. Help on this property, remember, four years ago. We in our selectmen do not even have the basic information we need to gather. We need information not from the developers, but from independent and partial witnesses.
Mr. Steve Baer?
I have a bunch of questions mixed upon. I'll go quickly, because a lot of stuff has already been said, but proposed patrons can experience, this is a quote from the document I have, can experience horses, horses and lives of horses and personal. That shows a security problem to me, if people have access to the horses and the jockeys. The parking plan is fully laid out, um, there's no details in it. The bathroom plan for the public is fully laid out. The statement says consistent, is consistent with other expeditions. This is not the same as it's other expeditions. Sewage, water, um, studies were performed, is there enough water up on the hill? It's not true, the fact that there are supposed, uh, three hundred horse stalls proposed, uh, three hundred attendees probably. There is a lot of, the fire sprint was after horse washing, horse watering, turf watering, jockey breeding, clutter flushing, and drinking time. The jockey plans are adequate. Traffic study was non-existent. Peaceability and economic impact is improper, it's based upon, um, something totally different, which is seven hundred and fifty races, I believe. Seventy, seventy-five days of racing, seventy-five days of racing, that's a season. Last one hundred and fifty days, um, nine races per day, so forth, three thousand spectators, so forth and so on. The numbers are not quite right. And further on. Eclon, Eclon said it's standard by any H D A P, which is an animal enforcement people. So they have a bias in there towards horse racing. The industry supposedly is, is motivated by student mass to enhance the dying industry of horse racing, as Mr. Cole. And some of the policies, just on purpose, a second, some policies underspilled in the section six, seven, the part that was second policy, as you want to do, and, and some written in. Not room, the beauty of land, you've got some people there, a lot cause noise and light pollution, loans to head up there, not also pushing common in the area. A lot caused traffic jams, a lot taken away from control from the town, the town is very, um, circus for making sure this is a good place, it's a nice place, it's not a place that's like full of riffraff or whatever. And what I said was, was told by a representative here, what made reference around is that he said to the person, if you go away till the festival weekend, you wouldn't know where you're there when you come back. And that, that's not very nice to say, of course.
Just have a couple of names that have already been entered, so I'm not checking. Um, I think Mr. Edward Kelly. We had a Brian Kelly call earlier, but I don't think he was here.
Yeah, I know, I just went Kelly, nine seven six up, it's turnstreet. The bottom, that's supposed to be a, almost a race track. I walk the road almost every day. And.
Speak directly to him.
I walk the road every day. And I don't want race track on my back yet, I don't want traffic. I don't want my grandkids just down the road playing on the front lawn and people I don't know drive by. I'm also wondering what kind of that check you do when all these people are going high, high are bringing to town. And I also know that two years ago, shortly after the Hardwick Fair, the Mornat Butterfly started massing, massing at the end of the road. Get ready to fly to Mexico. This year I didn't see it. And I'm wondering what effect the racetrack will have on. And I'm wondering what effect the racetrack will have on the Mornets because they need a specialist, particularly diet of milkweed. And right now they haven't. Well, they haven't. That's what the racetrack should do. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stanley Remus S. Steed. My apologies.
I have trouble with it too.
Mine too.
So, um. My name is Stan Harvashewski. I live at one way North Road. And I am speaking to you tonight as the Chair of the Board of Health. I vote by the Board of Health that I be here to speak to you. So getting to the point, the Board of Health has recognized concerns in the horse racing gambling enterprise proposal that warrant attention and better understanding. I will focus on three of those concerns. Timeline is accelerated. The expedited approach taken by promoters of the enterprise preclude due diligence. It is improper, by all accounts, for the State Commission to maintain the pace this is moving at or accelerate it. It must be slowed down to offer time to thoughtful consideration. Point two, lack of information sharing and processing. Because the commission, like the enterprise promoters, has not proactively shared information, the Board of Health remains uninformed and unprepared to assess the situation to the extent required to reach a well-formed position. Point three, a review process must be started. The Board cannot consider assigning the location for the enterprise now or even soon, as it must do to fulfill its role and responsibility for the town under Chapter One Eleven, Section One Forty-Three, and Section One Twenty-two of Massachusetts General Law. In fact, it is not likely for the Board to render a position until sometime after the Board holds public hearing on the matter as obligated by law. Following this, there will be discovery to understand concerns raised in the public hearing. There is more to discuss. As it stands today, the proposal most hoped for us for this enterprise in Hardwick cannot be seriously considered. It remains a pitch, an idea not supported by detailed plans. Even with the award of a license, should the commission choose to do so, and even with the Selectment's approval of a location, should they choose to do so and should it stand, the assignment of a location by the Board of Health has not been established and cannot be established for some time. It may be prohibited. Either way, the Board's action is required. Speaking for the Board, we ask that you fully appreciate the Board's jurisdiction on this matter. I would add, there's no mention of public health or safety, well-being, or what it means to be a nuisance or to not be a nuisance in any of the material shared by the enterprise.
Mr. John Patrick Rio.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is John Patrol.
Thank you.
This project, in my opinion, will grant irreparable harm to Hardwick and our surrounding communities. The very essence of our community is and continues to be built upon a sense of place that one that has remained remarkably unchanged for over three centuries. A rich history and diversity among residents has included notable patriots, farmers, textile workers, and entrepreneurs, among others. What makes this project untenable is also what makes this area special. Its geographic isolation, in part created by the tremendous sacrifice of our four neighboring lost towns, drowned forever by the creation of the Robin President. This proposal does not comply with the principles outlined in the Massachusetts Gaming Commission's mission statement. And I quote, "to provide the greatest possible economic development benefits and revenues to the people of the Commonwealth and induce to the maximum extent possible the potential negative or unintended consequences of expanded gaming." This project is a last-ditch effort to grab at a brass ring of opportunity for two lucrative and exclusive licenses from the Gaming Commission. A more suitable location for this project starts with land that is unencumbered, not protected by agricultural protections, an area with excellent highway connectivity, not one with limited access, a site near major population areas, not one isolated such as ours, a site with infrastructure to support the project, including water, sewer routes, fire, police, emergency service, not one lacking these things. No amount of money will overcome harm that will occur if this project comes to. We stand to lose the most crucial distinctive characteristics of Hardwick, our small villages, our quiet, open, and natural landscapes, and the peaceful nature and spirit that is possible within such a community. Once that is gone, it's gone forever, like the lost towns of Dana, Greenwich, Enfield, and Prescott. Reject this proposal. Find a spot that fits your mission statement complying with the core values of your commission that has been enumerated in your charge of overseeing. Thank you.
Ms. Judith Kahl. Ma'am Kahl. Judith Kahl. Okay. Ms. Ellen H. Anderson.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Ellen Anderson. I am a resident of Petersham, and I'm speaking for myself, though I am an elected town official in my town. I hope you enjoy listening to the citizens of Hardwick as much as I have. This has been a wonderful evening so far, and I second pretty much everything that they have said. I'd like to say, beginning comments is that this is primarily a gaming facility, and I'd like to take issue with Mr. Stephanini's who says that this is primarily agricultural. This is clearly incorrect. It does not conform to local zoning. It's going to require a special permit. Moreover, it is a protected property, and the agricultural interests in the agricultural preservation restriction are subject to constitutional protections under Article Ninety-seven of the state constitution. I would also like to say that I understand, and I ask the commission, do you have to have, does this racetrack have to be on private property? Could it be on public property? Could it be on public property? What I understand is it should be on private property. This property has no meats and bounds survey. The road, it's not clear exactly where the road is. My belief is that this project is in fact going to be located on public property, but you have absolutely no way of knowing. And in fact, the purchase and sale agreement is conditional upon a survey. The deed is probably a hundred and fifty years old, and we don't know exactly where that road is, what's private, what's public. So I believe the location, I don't see how you can prove a location when you don't really know where it is. Thank you very much.
Ms. Anderson, we have a follow-up question for you. It's an A T one. Commissioner Hill?
Oh, I'm the Chair of the Board of Assessors of the town of Petersham.
The Board of, I'm sorry.
The Board of Assessors.
Thank you. Ms. Anne Barnes.
My name's Anne Barnes, and I'm from Forty-Four Russel's Hill Road in Hardwick. I was born here, grew up here, left for forty-five years, and came back to retire here with my husband. I like that town hasn't changed much. And I regularly celebrate the center of the village of Hardwick that hasn't changed. It's on the National Historic Register. We can't accommodate parking lots and so on. I wish you could have seen the ghost rock last weekend in that old cemetery. It was amazing. And that's the kind of atmosphere we like in this town. And I hope that, I also hope a lot of towns board meetings. I know the Selectmen are burdened with the sewer and the other tests of managing the town. And I don't think taking on a big cooperation with all their lawyers is a good thing.
Ms. Barnes, I have a follow-up question. You said that the village, the town is on a national, uh, district. Is that the type of riding, riding, you know, not that strong with all the white house?
Yes.
That's on the National Historic Register. So that's something perhaps racetracks or events that might want to put in.
Thank you for clarification.
Ms. Elizabeth S. Simon. Thank you.
Elizabeth Simon, I live at one eighty-four Hardwick Con Road. I too was born in this town, grew up in this town, left for a little while, came back. I was going to ask you people, but I know you're not answering questions. But I'm assuming the six of you came in your own cars, and you drove here separately. And I'm asking you, once you hit the town line, how many gas stations did you see? You have Coverland Farms. You can maybe get four cars in there. There's no diesel. How many restaurants did you see? The Hardwick House Pizza, Mimi's, and Rose Thirty-two is open once in great while. How many places to stay? Not a single hotel, motel, or anything. And you have to go ten miles for that. Where are we going to accommodate the thousands of people who are going to come in? How are those buses going to get fueled? How are those people going to get fed? It's not going to happen. We have two thousand six hundred and sixty-seven people in this town as of the last survey. This group is talking about bringing in more people than exists in this town. And a quick comment, the gentleman over there stated that he's going to wait until after the second cutting of hay to cut hay for that racetrack. Once that racetrack's in there, there is no hay. He's talking about parking thousands of cars on the hayfields. You've got no hay. And then he said, if anybody here is a farmer, be included. We'll back this up. When was the last time we got third or fourth cutting at any hayfield in this town? Doesn't exist anymore.
Ms. Robin Crowdy.
My name is Robin Crowdy. I live on Berry Road in Hardwick, a thirty-nine-year resident. I'm a professional dog handler, dog trainer, show dogs, and I operate a boarding account by special permit by Arzoni Board in this town, by a planning board. Blue Dog, fun fact, my own personal dog won its national specialty, which is kind of like winning the Kentucky Derby, just for fun fact. My husband's son and I operate Cloverhill Farm two miles east of Metagroup, Great Metagroup Farm on the same road. Our family received a Massachusetts Centennial Farm Award from the state for owning our three-hundred-acre farm for over a hundred years. Starting in eighteen eighty-eight, we are now five generations strong. We have respected land use, and we promote local agriculture in Massachusetts. This proposal is being rushed to accommodate investors. I cry foul. The horse breeding ploy is the only way this proposal could get its foot in the APR door. Gaming is far from agriculture. This disrespects the APR program. I'm sure this commission is thinking long and hard helping manage gambling in the state. Suffolk Downs is out of business. You awarded something to the Win Casino. Why would a tiny town like this of three thousand, now standing less than three thousand, why would we want a commercial racetrack? Hardwick is indeed a rural town. When Boston needed clean water, we flooded four towns in the nineteen thirties to create the Quonklin Reservoir. Let's not make Hardwick the fifth town that Boston sinks.
Ms. Barbara Page.
Good afternoon. Thank you for taking my comments. My name's Barbara Page. I live on Ridge Road in Hardwick, and I have lived there for forty years this month. The developers are making promises to us that I don't believe they can keep. They promised they won't race for the four days per year, their first five years of racing. They also say they won't reach twenty or more days of racing in the next decade. I know that you, the commissioners, have oversight with regards to their annual applications and whether to grant them a waiver if they are not racing at least twenty days as required in order to maintain their simulcasting license. The developers also promise that their applications will be based on what the town says with regards to the number of racing days, and that they will never, ever race for the twenty days in Hardwick. I don't see how they can live up to these promises when the legislature sets those numbers and you enforce them. I think you should vote no because the process has been contradictory, rushed, and confusing, to say the least. This is not honest or fair. Thanks for your consideration. I think you should vote no, because the process has been contradictory, rushed and confusing, to say the least. This is not honest or fair. Thanks for your consideration.
Ms. Judith Corset, please.
Hi, Judy Corset. Um, I actually live on Berry Road and we have about one mile of this proposed racetrack. So we do have a lot at stake. I do wanna say that we are right. We believe that people should have the right to develop the land the way they should and could and want to. However, number one, you've heard many, many people talk about APR. We're APR too. We do not believe the intent of APR land was a commercial racetrack. That was not the intent. We had the right to the farm and do things in the town of Harburg. So I would definitely look and talk to the APR representatives to figure out if commercial racing was actually part of that. Number two, I think that there is frustration. You've heard the frustration in the crowd. I'm not gonna repeat all the thousands of things we've heard here tonight, because I did have a run down. But I really need my notes, because each one of you are holding notes in your hands, I see right now, that actually tell you what we've been hearing. The grass track is gonna be exactly the way it was. But we're investing two point two million dollars to make it a track. Oh, we'll guarantee you two to five days in the next five years. But the state determines that. It's right in the piece of paper. You have exhibit one of what they've been telling us. And that's, the problem with that is it contradicts the laws. What you're representing, how you bet, what's on the application, there's contradictions. And when there's contradictions, obviously people are going to be nervous. The selectmen are sitting there going, we need money for this town. But the problem is five hundred thousand's not gonna cover the damage it's gonna do to town. You run over those streets too many times, are they gonna replace the roadways? Are they going to actually replace the immediate infrastructure? No, they said everything has to come out of five hundred thousand. That's not enough. You've seen the town, you drove through the town. Matter of fact, the bishop from Worcester got lost for a half hour. It's late to the hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of the church last weekend because he got lost in the town. So you can kinda see what it's like out here. It's a small town. Again, we are, we believe in full rights of property, but we also believe that intent and following the rules, doing the right thing is very important. And thank you, selectmen, very difficult. I wouldn't wanna be in your shoes.
Devon Robb?
Hello. I haven't been in town recently for a long time and well, I love it. Not that long. Speak right into a microphone today. So I've heard a lot of people, um, talk about change and how this town is unchanged and it doesn't take much to realize that the town has remained unchanged for a long time, which is why it's so beautiful. However, it's a sinking ship. Without Boston's help or without anybody else's help, we're sinking our own ship at this point. Which is why you hear a lot about the money and this and that. And a minimum of five hundred thousand would be fantastic to our town, because it's still ten to twelve percent of our budget right now, which would help immensely. On top of that, you could, uh, the town could gain more than that, which would be wonderful. And if we do come up with a very strict agreement with the investors and with the people starting a business, then I think we could come to calming ground with everybody. And that would be wonderful. As, as some people have said that their hundred-year-old farm, I don't think you're doing the same farming now as you were a hundred years ago. I think your business plan has changed, so that your ship, your ship doesn't sink. Our business plan has not changed in a very, very long time. And I think change is needed. And remaining the same is important as well. And I think the investors have really heard that from us. We are a town of over three thousand people. And I will say that there are many people that are not here tonight. There are many people that are for it, that will not speak for it. And those people that are not here, most of them do not really care whether it goes through or not. So the numbers here do not necessarily reflect the numbers of the entire town.
Owen Robb?
My name is Owen, uh, I have the town laws. I've grown up in a town with many different, uh, guys that I grew up with and whatnot. Uh, it is a beautiful little town, but as my wife Devon said, it is sinking. The town struggles, needs money, our police could benefit from this, fire could benefit from this. It could, it could be a good thing for the town. It's scary going through, yes, with things to work out, yes. But in the end, a lot of people speak about how much they love these fields. During the time that the last owner had it, how many people donated at the time, wanting anything to help the guy take care of those fields, it's expensive. And we got a person that's come in that's willing to maintain these fields and try to make a profit for himself at the same time. It's probably not a terrible thing to look into.
Marcus Hayden? Okay, thank you, I'm just confirming. Thank you, I wanted to make sure, I'm then going back to Brian Kelly. And then back to Judith Corset. All right, those are all our earlier registrations. Now we're gonna turn to Eric Dixon.
Thank you commissioners for hearing us here tonight. My name's Eric Dixon, I'm a resident in Princeton, as I've always said at these meetings. I am a supporter of horses and horse rescues. I have no financial ties whatsoever to this proposal. I have no financial ties to the therapy industry, financialism. What happens to horses after they race? I do have a thirty-five acre farm in Princeton where I have bred, uh, two standardbred racehorses which do race. I think a decade ago, when the Racehorse Development Club was created, there was something left out. And that was money to support the horse rescues in the state. There's money to support the horsemen, there's money to support the racing courses, the preview programs, but nothing for the horses after they're done racing. The reason I, I was supportive of the proposal in Sturridge, and I support this proposal, is because this is different from every other racetrack proposal out there. This locks in support for the horses after they're done racing. Either through support of existing horse rescues in the state or in support of a new rescue that would be created on-site. This is what horse racing should be. And that's why I support this proposal. Whether or not this is right for the town of Harburg, this is, that's up to the people of Harburg to decide and select. But I do think that what you have proposed here is something that should be the national standard for all racehorses, uh, for all the programs, moving forward. Thank you.
Mr. Andrew Ward?
Hi folks, can you hear me okay? So, my name's Andrew Ward, I live on Upper Church Street as well, right next to the boat track. Uh, I've got a lot of neighbors who sew here, it's the next to Big Mac, we'll talk about monarch butterflies. But they don't know a lot about it. It is the natural heritage. I do some work for, for them, if you guys wanna know more about that. I've got another person who was talking about that. I have, uh, some children, three kids that, uh, I've been raised in. I've been living here for twenty-five years now. I love this town as much as I'll be. Uh, and I'm, I'm concerned for the financial wellbeing of this town as well. I've got a lot of ifs, right? I think we all have a lot of ifs. And so if, if we're talking about a race that happens once a year, maybe even twice a year on a week end, and then that festival looks something like, like how the Harburg Fair looks, or like how the Over the Walls looks, I think a lot of people would have much of a problem with that. We can talk about how traffic and those things will work. I don't see crowds and thousands of people coming here. I think that might be, and that, that people would potentially enjoy. Right, uh, I'm losing a lot of friends here. But, look. You know, I, I think that, uh, I think that if I can clarify that, so there's a member that's been on that street, uh, we can ask him some questions about, like, we have this opportunity every year to come back and reevaluate this, right? That's what I understand. We tried this. And it worked, and it was okay. And then those fields don't change, but they look the way that they look now forever. Right? You know, somebody coming in here that's hearing things that, if they don't do that, then we don't approve them anymore. They don't get an opportunity to do that anymore. But maybe we give them an opportunity to try.
Richard Pinkt, town hall?
Evening, commission and select board. I'm Richard Anketell, living up in Mass, a business representative of the cap, which is, uh, from Friggin' Hill, Pittsburgh, Florida. We have a lot of members out in this area. And Mr. Fields and his team has a very good history, he was a good, responsible contractor doing their work. Contracts that play by the rules, pay a good living wage and benefits. This project will create many opportunities for local people in the area to work on this project. Not just cap, there's all building trades, local florist, painters, everybody. So this is a great project for the community, a great opportunity for local residents to work on this project and make good money. That's all I have to say, thank you.
John Tomasi?
Linda Tomasi, thank you. My first, uh, let's see. So I've already sent this to the commission, uh, twenty-four hours ago, so whatever I'm gonna say. So at the Piscopo, uh, I am actually going to direct this, with, uh, there's more empty seats than there were five minutes ago, to Mr. Fields and his associates and the people that are with him. You need to direct it to us.
Oh, really?
Yeah, they'll be up here, but, uh, today the comments are for us, thank you. That's okay, that's all right.
And in fact, I don't believe all the commissioners have heard your comments. You, you send them by email to the three million commissioners.
That's right.
They look for, like, two, uh, those commissioners look for to hear them.
Well, thank you for that correction.
Thank you.
So I am Linda Tomasi, uh, born, bred, thoroughbred by the way, in Harburg, Massachusetts. Uh, this is in reference to the common, the historical piece of common, which is not far from the racetrack. Just minutes from the racing site, it's a town common, filled with farmers' markets, folksy, a vibrant historical society, a little league, frog catching, small town post office, and a quaint, a quaint sandwich shop. Also the bells of two churches ringing on Sunday mornings. And the cemetery with gravestones tell the long story and history of Harburg. Each mosque has a stone carefully cleaned by the popular and historic ghost walk in the fall. A short distance from the proposed racing site are beautiful streets lined with age-old trees, children playing outside, porch is filled on summer nights with the sound of silence and the calm that is rarely heard in most of our country. As newcomers join us in our community, we are reminded that they are here because of the little that we have to offer. They are here for the Norman Rockwell experience. They are here because they know that everyone is equal and that children will grow up in a stable and appreciative environment. And much of our children of the room will likely come back to Harburg to instill in their children that there is no place like home. I'm not suggesting that all residents oppose the racing facility, but I will argue the fact that the actual facts have not been presented to them unless they have had hours of patience and confusion to research these facts themselves. They are not aware of the four thousand expected people coming into our village on race days, that there will be a four-thousand-seat stadium with loudspeakers rebating the pristine, quiet Harburg late afternoons. They do not know of the riots and crime rates that comes with the territory, the shuttle buses going back and forth, back and forth. Not to mention the closing of one of Harburg's most beautiful towns, which will be wiped out in a matter of months, something which took Mother Nature hundreds of years to perfect. They hear about new restaurants, sun classes, residents receiving horses, vegetable gardens. These are all great and would be welcome if the negative effects did not heavily outweigh the positive. Our town has probably been the topic on Chronicle in Yankee as one of the most beautiful and charming towns in New England. The racetrack owners want it touted as Massachusetts tourist destination area. It already is that, only of a different nature. We open our arms and welcome visitors who respect our land and neighbors who can go back home and say to their friends, we found the most beautiful little town. Come, come into our town and just stop. Listen to the quiet. Look at the white houses with bony leaves filling their eyes and ask yourself, if I were living here, how would I feel about this? Would and could I give it up? Thank you.
Now, Mr. Tomasi?
Hello. My name is John Tomasi, I live on Berry Road in Harburg. Um, I just have a couple of comments. The versus on the, the way this whole scheduling is going, and the way people are saying, this has really been rushed. I think it's a classic example of the tail biting the dog. It's just, it's backwards. It's like, we haven't had the opportunity to absorb any of this and, and, you know, comment upon it. That's my first comment, my second one is, in the, in the paper, we've done a lot of research on this. Mr. Fields was quoted as saying, when he came to Harburg, he looked at that property and was so awestruck. He said it was heaven on earth. My question is, if it's heaven on earth, why do you wanna mess with heaven? That's it.
Ms. Lisa Prophet?
Hi there, uh, thanks for coming here tonight. Lisa Prophet, five-four-seven Russell School Road, Harburg. Uh, haven't made up my mind on this and a little bit late to the game and even finding out about it. However, I would like to ask you to extend your time. However, I would like to ask you to extend your timeframe, or to allow them to reapply after the town and the surrounding towns have been able to complete their due diligence on this project. I think the racing component is being downplayed, and I think it will definitely increase as new courses are being bred at this facility. Can the community host agreement dictate the number of race days and still be in compliance with MassGaming and still be profitable? According to your website, the MassGaming website, the three current casinos have grossed ninety-four million dollars in September of two thousand twenty-two alone. The Commonwealth has collected one point two zero eight billion dollars in taxes from these facilities since opening just a few years ago. The MassGaming Association taxes these casinos at forty-nine percent of gross sales. I don't know the full financial estimates that are being proposed to Harvick, but given the money that flows to both MassGaming and the state, I think that five hundred thousand dollars is not an acceptable reimbursement to the tax barriers in Harvick. I'm sure everyone in this room and beyond would be in favor of this project without the racing component, however, there is no financial interest in that, and I would ask you to please deny or at least delay this request until the town has a greater understanding of the impact of this certificate process. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dan O'Keeffe.
Good evening, thank you for having me. My name is Dan O'Keeffe, I'm the Vice President of the Worcester-Fitchburg Building Trains, I represent thousands of craftsmen within Worcester County. Just wanted to come here today to say Commonwealth Racing, dealt with the principles from them for a while now, they've been nothing but honest and transparent, and in these cases too, there's many different steps that need to be taken before it proceeds, and sometimes information is given later on because studies need to be done. So, as I said, we are in full support of this project, working with individuals like this that are honest, that work with contractors, they actually pay a fair wage, goes a long way for working with individuals like myself that represent thousands of workers within the area, because they're about the community, they're about giving back, about giving them opportunity. When I have to travel all the way to Easter Mass to work on a project and feed my family, but yet I live in Ware, that opens my eyes, saying, "What kind of opportunities do we have in these neighborhoods?" When you talk about the roads and say, "There's issues here and there's not enough funding", this could be an opportunity for the funding in the town. You talk about gas station without diesel, or maybe they would have diesel with more activity in the area. So, long story short, we are in full support, and we appreciate having individuals like this be transparent and watch them go through the process and actually give the proper information and have the proper studies be done. Thank you.
Nancy Allen. Nancy Allen. Michelle. Hartle. Hartle, okay.
Good evening, thank you for your time, thank you for coming. My name is Michelle Hartle, I am carpenter, local three-three-six out of Worcester. I recently bought property in Gilbertville, right over the bridge down here, five minutes away. So, I'm right by the Gilbert Bridge, just north of the bridge. I've been to the last two meetings on this subject matter, and I have five other people in the building that I just bought that could not be here, but they're in favor of this as well. So, listening to all the arguments for and against, Mr. Fields and his team have been more than transparent, every question that has been asked, from parking, has been to traffic, to race days, to setup and breakdown, to trash, has all been covered over and over and over again. Now, the sad thing, that I did not know before moving to this beautiful town, was we don't have an ambulance. Our police station is enchanted, they don't have an appropriate place to work and our understaff. You make a phone call, you're lucky if you're going to get an ambulance before you die. Hate to say it that way. The money that this generates can fix our roads, can improve our schools, can improve our police station, give them more help than they deserve to answer calls. And I'm carrying a balloon in the back, but I really care. Not only that, and the ambulance would be fantastic, like I said, but the jobs, both temporary and permanent, this will create, would be phenomenal. I have to drive over an hour to go to work, to feed my family and pay my taxes and my mortgage. So, to have something local would be great. I drove past this property after the first two meetings, and it's a beautiful property. It's a grass track, it's two race days. Everything's set up, taken care of, paid for, the additional funds needed for rescue, ambulance, all that, paid for by the commission. I'm a hundred percent for this. I didn't know this town existed before I ended up buying the property here. I'd love to move forward with this and see this happen.
Boring Hoppin.
I welcome you all, I'm Boring Hoppin, I lived here in Harvick for twenty-two years, I'm not a public speaker, so hopefully I'll pass out on you all. Back in the day, this community was all agricultural, they had big agricultural events, they had three to five to seven thousand cars in parking lots in these fields that are even in this These people wanted to do this online betting, so are we really going to get five thousand vehicles here? I don't, I don't really know. Maybe for the first year races, but after that, everybody's going to be doing betting on their phones, if I understand you correctly. They can go to Harvick, they'll drink more red in it to other towns. I just, I don't know. I support this, and I think it's great for a town like Harvick, never mind the surrounding communities, and I thank you for listening.
I understand that Chair would like to make a comment or ask comments of some sort, but before we move to you, Chair, I just want to ask, is there anyone else today that would like to make a public comment? And so, then I'll have the applicant who go after you, Chair. Thank you. Or do you?
I can go last. Happy to go last, if you'd like.
We do offer the applicant the opportunity to speak last, and I'm not sure if you're speaking substantively or if you're speaking procedurally with respect to the Select Board. She's saying procedurally, so, well, she'll follow, we have one more person who would like to speak, and when you come to the microphone, please do state your name clearly. And again, is there another hand before we go, another gentleman? So, Mr. Bonnie, if you could just hold, and thank you.
Hello, everyone, I'm Janet Holden, I'm from Redfield, Harvick.
Could you just spell your last name?
A. N. A. M.
Thank you.
I work full-time, but in my spare time, I run, I do horse rescue. It's called Yule Farm. We are an official five-one-one C-three, and one gentleman mentioned that it would be great if through this process, if some of the horse rescues could get some funds to take care of these horses. Apologize for the breaking of the voice, but I also network with several other rescues in state Massachusetts, and we all rely on fundraisers, spaghetti dinners, donations, Facebook, and honestly, a lot of our own cash. So, if, if there is a way that the three horses can be theirs, things can be secured, it'd be great. I have to, I'm just going to mention one thing that happened recently that is outside of the state of Massachusetts, but it's something to consider about horses after racing. Sometimes owners of horses die. These, these owners love their horses, and they take great care of them. Recently, in the state of New York, there was an auction of twenty-two thornback horses, and that's New York. But you brought up a point about something that could happen in Massachusetts, when an owner dies, if the horses, I, I do believe, I'm certainly not speaking from knowledge, personal knowledge, but I'd like that to be addressed in general, is are the regulations to protect the horses when the owner dies? Not just losing, you know, you lose your racing license, but how do you really protect the horses? So, thank you.
Hello, Commissioner, my name is Chris Rakas of Mass.
Just spell your last name.
Short T is a Tom, R.A.K.A.S. Then, and I, and a couple of good friends have been horse owners, thoroughbred horse owners since two thousand and five. I've been a fan of the sport since the seventies, Southern Downs, Kentucky Derby, Saratoga, horse racing. Secretariat, Sea Biscuit, Funny Science, the Gada, Mary P. Pharoah, and of course, our own horses that we have. You know, we've provided two good, hardworking people with full-time jobs since two thousand and five, and these people appreciate and love these jobs. We've also supported numerous businesses, including horse farms, hay farms, grain and feed stores, tap stores, veterinarians, horse shovers, hardware stores, and more. And, this, if this comes to pass, there will be jobs for people that want them. And, you know, these are good jobs for people who like working with their hands, who like being around horses. You know, not everybody wants to sit in front of a computer and write code, not everybody wants to work at Biotech, not everyone wants to work at Silicon Valley or in Wall Street. You know, society needs jobs for people with different skill sets and different interests, and this is something that will provide these jobs. Some of them will be full-time, a lot of them will be part-time, but the people who do get these jobs, you know, will, will love the jobs, and give them a chance to make some money, and, you know, hopefully be able to afford to stay in the area. And the last thing I do want to say is that, you know, through our endeavors in the horse field, you know, I've dealt with Richard Fields and I've met Jan Jiggy, and, you know, they're not close friends, but I'm kind of aware of them. If they say there's going to be two days of racing, that's it, they're not going to go beyond that. If they say it'll never exceed twenty, it'll never exceed twenty. So, that's all I want to say, this, I think jobs, especially jobs for people that like working with their hands are important. We need, society needs a variety of jobs for people with different skill sets, and thank you.
Anyone else? Oh, thank you.
My name is Jim Paul.
Could you spell?
Forty-four Rutherford School Road.
You could spell your last name, because it's R and S, I'm sorry.
First of all, I'd really compliment the world for openness and fairness and tolerance. Having been on that side of the table, it's sincere appreciation from every person who makes a difference. Just to your end.
Just closer to the mic, don't, don't you?
Oh, Linda Tomasi, I would mistake it was on my card. I'm going to come after you.
No, just right, just right close to the mic, please, thank you.
My concern is that some of the information was put out rapidly and rather difficult, even for someone who's been paying the work for a long time, to install large quantities of data in a heartbeat. And I'm not sure that some of the people who share that understand the consequences of, once this type of project gets in motion, it's going to be very difficult to get people to look at what they can learn, what the outside effects will be in the long term of this project. And the last, twenty twenty, there have been forty-nine racetracks that have closed. Now, one would say, there must be something going on if the American public is not concerned about, maybe there are more problems than solutions with the introduction of a racetrack into the community. Now, our community is, of course, one of the smaller communities. If you look at the ones that closed, they were in larger communities, and they had an opportunity for the locals to have almost, and I could also say, I'll have a whole Russell line. My experience so far has been, the community here has been put at a significant disadvantage because information flows rather slowly, and that we're becoming increasingly aware of the other side had enormous amount of resources that we didn't. I guess what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is, I think we need a little bit more, a bit more time to understand this is profoundly changing. Now, total explosion of I'm a social defender, through my own criminal behavior, I was expelled from public school for the third grade. So, I would be very suspect about what it is I've provided you with until you check the rest of my resume. I've worked in thirty-two of the fifty states, most of my work has been trying to discern the accuracy of information when people are trying to produce very significant, powerful change to the communities. Most often, it is the small communities who get molested. And so, I guess my petition to you is, you take the information that has been provided to you with a certain amount of extra interest, because maybe we don't have all the sophistication as some of these other operations do. And what I'm pointing to you is- And what I'm pointing to you is to certainly look at the manner in which the information was delivered. It's, for me, having attended probably a couple of thousand of these, these little presentations where I was on that side of the table, it is so refreshing to see the change, the exchange between those folks who probably have to summon a lot of courage to stand up here and try to make information clear, reliable, and trustworthy. I guess my biggest, uh, having been there, I understand the difficulty to be there, but the hope to have, I would like to look at the degree, as honesty and sincerity and optimism.
Is there a final question? I have a final question.
Yes.
Who expelled you? Which town?
Um, it wasn't in Massachusetts, but, uh, but I, I did, interesting thing, I did get back when I finally grew up in the state of Missouri. Actually graduated from Cal, much to frighten many of my teachers and probably my people was serious for a certain reason. The beauty of this is, I got to go back as a fellow official in order that public schools should. So, there is some justice for that.
Thank you. Any other hands? Any other hands? No? Not missing anyone? Okay. Um, I'm sorry. If you jumped up, there seems to be one more. Yes, ma'am. Yes, please. Just come up and state your name and we may ask you to spell your last name. Thanks.
I'm Alice Lowell. I grew up on the farm, really one of the race tracks. I had nothing against horses. I would love to have that. But with agricultural, the animals in it, it's a hard decision for this town. We need the income, but I'd like to have to compromise somehow. And can we have the racetrack somewhere else and have the animals so carefully preserved by the town? It's the best place to live and the animals would be great and that's what it was intended for. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, we see one more gentleman? Second. I understand the term, um, the term is taking a second bite of the apple. Um, I hope, because you're up here so far, I'm gonna let you have a second bite of the apple.
Thank you.
You were pretty brief before. Thank you. But remind us of your name, please.
Yeah, gentlemen.
Yes.
I'd just like to say, when the A T R first came out, there was a lot of discussion about landowners and farmers and everything from the farmers. They usually come over to the general store, pick up paper, have discussions about it. And they thought about what they were doing with the land. Someone said, no, we'd never give up our rights. Chairman Field thought about that. Chose to do the A T R. And that was supposed to be for that state to play games. Now, it changes. So, I'm asking you, oh, against the race track, but Dan didn't want to race track. Now, it's making my apologies.
You know, um, I see some other, now I see another individual who wants to come for a second bite of the apple and I actually am going to, um, I'm going to ask that, uh, we respect that. We all had a chance to speak. I'm, I'm sorry that I gave him the opportunity to come up. He was all the way up here when we recognized him this morning. Yeah, he's apologizing. But it is, um, it is approaching six-thirty and I wanna honor the opportunity for the applicant and, and, um, and I'm believing your name, ma'am, no, not you, Mrs. Stefani, but the individual who raised, um, but you were, you were heard and we appreciate your comments. Thank you. Okay, Mrs. Stefani, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, for this opportunity to speak again about a great number of farms and commissioners and select board members. Um, my name is John Stefany for the record, representing a great number of farms. Uh, sort of a poppy year of comments and sort of, uh, responses first. We thank folks for their comments sincerely and appreciate the input. This project has modified and changed and we've tried to be responsive, transparent, and direct with people in restaurants. And if people want to email and call us or talk to us as a group, we will do that in a large group or whatever it is to address people's concerns. We try to collaborate and be direct. Um, we have an agreement with Zenn Acres, which gives us until February of next year to work through our permitting process. And to be clear, all of, uh, what we're asking at the beginning of this process is approval to the right to continue the process. That means we need to go to the planning board and do a survey of the property, do site plan review, and go through a traffic study, all of the different pieces. And at each step of the way, we have yet another hurdle front in the plan to cross. We have to go to the agricultural land preservation committee and go through the process there relative to the HPR pro- project, et cetera. We need to go through these as we go forward. The endangered species piece that was talked about is on the, uh, outer part of the property at the furthest distance from where we're touching in our proposal. We're looking at doing big barns and a pavilion at the top of the hill. The property on the wetlands we talked about are at the bottom on the opposite side of the road, uh, and not near us. We certainly will review and have looked at that. We don't believe that applies to us, but we're open to a conversation with them and would do that as part of our discussions with, uh, the Commonwealth. In addition to that, the statute decided by the Board of Health is the nuisance statute. As a licensed activity within the zoning of the community, we don't believe we present a nuisance, nor do we think that our horses and the noises they create are any difference. The event that we're talking about doing, and I wanna talk in a moment about the number of days because that is a, uh, important part of this conversation. The events we're talking about and the number of people we're talking about are very similar to the hybrid fair, to the winery festivals, to the, uh...
Sorry, please. Like, you know, we have done such an excellent job this evening. And I, I just really want everyone to pause. Okay, let's just take a breath. All right? And, and, um, all individuals, so let's take a breath. We're gonna allow the applicant to make the presentation.
I, I, I appreciate the quiet, too.
Thank you. The Over the Wall Festival, which was run there in two thousand and four to two thousand and five, while this specific site, by the estimates and reports, had three to five thousand people in attendance for the event. Uh, and we have lots of documentation, uh, attendance and pictures and whatnot. There will be no parking on this site. We're using adjacent properties and agreements and shuttle buses and we, that will be all subject to modification and discussion with the Board of Selectmen in terms of how we would deal with that. Um, the site has been for the last, uh, number of years, according to the person haying, it's been hayed three or four times a year, each and every year. And our schedule was designed to allow that to continue in consultation with the farmer who does the haying site. It is bluegrass and every farm is a little bit different. There's also a couple of different varieties that are there. The site itself, um, it is correct and we have been clear, the track in two locations would need some, um, soil adjustments. We believe that they are modest and we work with A P R in terms of living within their regulations. A racetrack, and our racetrack professionals tell us, the track should unsulate no more than two to five percent. And we believe this track today is, with the exception of two areas we talked about, within that parameters. Yes, we would oversee the areas where the grass occurs and yes, we would cut those areas. But we would, in our estimation, have more hay fields when we're done because of some efforts that the previous farmer, um, has done to reclaim five to twenty acres of pasture land. So, we believe there's a net growth in, in pasture pieces of that. This group, um, different members of this group have been part of different ventures in different areas. This group has been together for, um, three years, a little more than two years, and has looked at some different sites. The number of, and different issues at each site is a little different. This proposal is different than anything any of them have been involved with before because it is focused on the horse retirement, the horse breeding, and the activity that's around that and the commercial activity. And I'd like to pick up where Mr. Barnes left off. We talked about twenty racetracks closing in the last, uh, since, uh, two thousand, I believe you said. That's well documented. Those tracks that have closed because they have no subsidy, no assistance, no secondary form of revenue in the system. This track is not, and we've said this a lot of times, it is not a casino. It cannot legally be a casino. It isn't a good location for a casino. We're not proposing a casino. We're not proposing a betting hall. We're not proposing those activities which you regulate and you deal with, nor are we prepared to come to you and ask for any of those things if they were legal. We propose putting in our, uh, our bringing to community prohibitions against that. Those revenues that come from the cell phones across our country, across our Commonwealth, and the Racehorse Development Fund will subsidize, in essence, the operation, which will in turn provide revenue to horse farmers, horse farmers here, horse farmers across the Commonwealth and maintain open spaces. Those twenty tracks that are closed across our country, with them, you can see a closing of horse farms, development farms, in, in, in invasion of development into those open spaces. Dr. Mullin, I think, outlined very clearly in his report, the relationship between the track, the subsidies and the purses and the money that goes to the horse owners, and the horse farms and the jobs that are associated with that. You're talking about hundreds and hundreds of jobs across our Commonwealth tied to one location because of the way you disperse revenues. So, let's talk about the number of days. The nineteen thirty-five statute that was adopted by the Commonwealth when racing was at its heyday had in it hundreds of races that had to pick places. I think the number was nine hundred at some point. And the number has come down. The legislature, instead of addressing the reality that the absence of horses, absence of purses, which is what drives how many race days you have, which was dwindling, left the number in there and declared to your predecessors the ability to declare dark days, which you have that authority today. The legislature recently reduced that number from a hundred, thought about fifty, went to twenty. It isn't a hard and fast roll that the legislature established. If it were, they would say you must do twenty days. But instead, in recognition of these hurdles and challenges, they said, you, the commission, can waive those days if it is necessary for the track to be operational. We've proposed to you this year that we would like to race two days next year, that we'd like you to waive eighteen. We don't foresee in the future, as have the movement of horsemen and as have the breeders, that there will be sufficient horses or purses in the future, as far as anyone can see, based on the Racehorse Development Fund, et cetera, that those days are gonna be able to grow much more than that. But those two precious days, while they will bring folks to this community and there'll be a festival, we hope it's something you're proud of and that we're proud of, will provide revenues to horse farms here and across the Commonwealth, to hay farms, to ferriers, to veterinarians, and all of the other pieces that go with that. We intend to partner with Tufts Veterinary School, uh, and their incredible facility, which is wonderful with students but doesn't have patients. Um, attendance, we've tried to think of some creative ways in our post-community room to deal with it and we're open to ideas in terms of how we deal with predicting attendance and dealing with attendance and parking. One of them that we looked at was reducing the number of weekend days that we would race as we add days and added Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, where if you look at racetracks and they have virtually no attendance, but it still achieves the benefit to the horse owner by providing their ability to show their horse, sell their horse, and redistribute money through purses as a way to, to deal with, um, some species. It's been said that this is strictly regulated. Our activities could not be any strictly regulated in terms of ownership, transfer, and they might not look at whether or not you get expelled from the third grade, but the state trooper was taking notes of that while you were saying it because they know everything. And it's a serious business. You have a serious endeavor in terms of what it means for a qualifier and a background to, you know that, I'm saying it to the education of people here. We do that annually. We do it anytime it's a transfer of ownership. We have annual letters we have to go through, we have to report before the Board of Select. We have proposed a nine-member local advisory committee that would be made up of residents, either ex officia or selected, however the select board chooses, that we would work with to address and make sure we're dealing with local issues, preference, preference and advertising and higher, making sure local residents have access to, uh, the events and the activities that are going on here. Um, the design of the track, our architects, who have a lot of experience in tracks and our track team, which has, uh, experts in turf and track design and maintenance, have been directed very clearly to design something that does as minimal disruption as possible and using temporary stakes, almost the way they would do a, uh, a, uh, a steeple, so that the, it goes up, it can race, it goes back. So, in an attempt to be as minimally disruptive to the haying and other operations that occur on the field. Um, we do not need to, we, horses don't use that as part of their piece. Uh, bluegrass is a preference. And I guess I would just end with one thought. I have spent a great deal of my personal time in N G O, kind of volunteering in my local government, on and off for about thirty years. I appreciate how difficult the task is and I've tried to, at least for our team, to be as transparent, as responsive, and as direct as we can be to answer questions. There are questions that are unanswered because we're at the beginning of the process. We commit publicly, Richard Fields, Robert Calagia, Patrick and I, to answer questions, to try to provide solutions, to try to find ways to bring people a level of comfort. This operation, a lot of what I hear in this and a lot of the fears and concerns, which by the way are from undocumented, unsourced flyers that have been pushed around, are not consistent with the facts of the laws of our Commonwealth, of our approach or our proposal. We ask for your consideration. We are prepared to answer any and all questions that come to us, um, from anyone, not just the boards and the commission, and we appreciate your time here today. Thank you.
Chair, thank you. I don't think I have to tell you how much the people behind, stand behind you and literally behind us, lifting us up, appreciate this town and how big of an issue this is for this town. It's a big issue for the three people sitting over there. So I thank the Chair, Commissioner O'Brien, Commissioner Hill, Commissioner Skinner, and Commissioner Maynard for listening. We are well over posted time. You were very generous, a lot probably more generous than we were in our meeting. Shut people's microphones off if they went over time. You were kind with a sign. We know that you will make the right decision. You will be fair. You've listened to everything we have to say. I'm fairly certain that folks will be streaming in and listening to what you have to say. And just want to thank you on behalf of the residents of the Town of Hartwick for coming here, holding your hearing. We welcome you back. If you want to ride on any of those roads that people have been talking about, we promise we won't let you get lost like the bishop. But we're here. You know, we encourage questions if you have anything for us and really are interested in your deliberations, any insight that you have for us, questions that we may raise to you. But really appreciate all of your time. Not comfortable seats that you're sitting on for a long period of time. It was a little chilly in here, so I apologize for that. But thank you again for your time, for considering this very difficult topic for the Town of Hartwick. Thank you for the residents for being here. Yet again, I know this is your hearing. I just wanted to again say thanks and our appreciation on behalf of the board and the residents of Hartwick. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments for members of the community? And I think on behalf of my fellow commissioners. Could you give us a minute to just get through a procedural question, please? And I was about to thank you, so you don't want to miss that. Thank you, everyone. We are gonna have a point of clarification that you'll, we think that perhaps you might wish to hear. And then we have one other housekeeping being asked. We thought you were gonna get away without folding up your blue chairs. But we are gonna ask that everybody fold up their chairs to help the custodians for the colloquial. We just thought it's important for a certification to be made. I understand that. Mr. Hanlon?
So I understand that the question is, sure. I understand that the question is, is the approval pursuant to 128A, Section 13A, the approval by the Board of the racetrack? Do you want us to address that, right? Close sequence, sure. So a condition that is required for the gaming commission to grant a racing license is approval under Chapter 128A, Section 13A. A hearing has already been held in the community on that matter that was taken by the Board of Selectmen. And I anticipate that it will happen soon. And within the five hundred and fifteen, just the date by statute of the Gaming Commission must act. And I suspect that if approval is received, that the approval will be conditioned on, upon planning board approval and the other approvals that I think people have talked about and that are that come with any development projects in the community, which is consistent with, for example, the approval that came into playing field originally. We received 13A approval in that community in 1997. I think it was approval condition by the Department of Transportation. So that is the question. Excuse me, and the host community, that was a condition on those.
Okay. No second bites of the apple. I'm sorry. The question, Stefani, was just, we wanted to make sure everyone here understood that the sequence is, we've got two processes going on. We deal with what is on our statutes and the town deals with what is before that. And so Mr. Hanlon just clarified. Councilor Brian.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the board. I think what the audience is alluding to is under 128A, 13A. If the Board approves the location, twelve percent of the voters file petition with my office, they are to immediately reconsider their decision. If they do not rescind their decision, then a special election has to be held within forty-five days of the date of submission. Now, I don't know if it's submission to me or may submit to them. I've reached out to Secretary of State Counsel for clarification. But I guess the question, obviously because of the statutory deadline after November fifteen, is if they make a vote of approval and a petition is submitted, the location decision is automatically suspended until such time as an election can be held. So if the license is granted while the petition is already, you know, presented, it technically suspends that decision. Would the commission consider holding the decision until the election has been held? Because at that point, if the town has an election, a special election, and they vote in or not, excuse me, in favor or opposed, that is the decision. That is, you know, the final decision in regards to the location. So I think that might be what's being asked is the fact that, considering if they do approve, that petition's gonna come to my office, they have to reconsider. If they don't, we have to have an election in forty-five days. So if you can comment on that, if not, follow up. But I just wanted to bring that to light.
Thank you so much. So I wish to thank each and every one of you for being such a wonderful public for us to hear from. Your level of interest, so many of you offering your comments, some of you noting that you're not comfortable speaking in public. I join you. So we thank you, we thank you for all the input. Really on behalf of each and every one of us. We also thank you for being so courteous and respectful of the process. As I noted at the beginning, these are passionate matters. And we are very appreciative that you've allowed us to come today to your home, your Hartwick, and to allow us to hear from you. And we appreciate your input as well. And we thank you. Have a good night. Everyone get home safe and grab some cookies. We want to honor these. And again, thank you so much. And please fold up your blue chairs.